And a moved in a second. I will ask if there are any other nominations. And then I will, I guess we don't normally open it up for discussion, but so then I will take a roll call for for supporting vote for the office of president. So that being said, may I have a motion for a nomination for a president?
I would like to nominate Darcy Simorusti.
I second it.
Do we have any other nominations? We have one name on the floor, so I will take a roll call, yes or no? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre Trebono?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Simorusti, welcome to the president. She will take over the meeting now. Congratulations. I'm happy to be back in my chair and very excited to have another another year to be the president of the board. It's been an amazing experience to be the president of the board for the last two years, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to continue to do so. I feel like we're on a roll, you know, like I feel like everybody's really settled into a very nice groove, and we all have our places, and, you know, we all work together incredibly well even when we disagree, and I, that means the world. So I really look forward to to all the work that we will do together for the rest of 2018. So now our next order of business is to elect a vice president. So do we have a nomination for a vice president?
I would like to nominate Ann Gowan.
Second.
Well, I didn't even have to ask for the second. The second was offered. Are there any other nominations? No? Okay, Linda, seeing none, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
We gave back, if you will, to the taxpayers approximately $4 million. And that $4 million averages out to about 12 cents a year in taxation. 12 cents, one cent being $10 on a $100,000 assessment. In your case, it's $120, they average 12 cents per year on 100,000. Your house is $200,000, $240 average savings. Even though it appears the taxes have gone up a lot, you managed to put back that kind of money to help offset tax inquiries, excuse me, tax increases. Also, what you have done is give back money in the area of the capital reserve money that was appropriated in the following year to, for capital purposes, that we had money available. We did not have to increase taxes for maintenance reserve. We have new this year 100,000, and the emergency reserve we appropriated in the last three years, 350,000. Now, every $50,000 is one cent on a tax rate, so the numbers that I've generated just now shows you the amount of money that's really been used to help offset taxpayer requirements. The third page of the handout is, if you look at your audit reports, there's a J4 exhibit. Now that we have the copies, the J4 is on pages 110 and 111. I just wanted to show you where we got the information from. The J4 is 10 years' worth of revenues and 10 years' worth of expenditures. What I've done for tonight's meeting is basically pulled out the middle eight years to see what's happened within Highland Park over the 10-year period of time. Now, one of the things that you as board members are well aware of, one of the biggest areas of increase has been taxation. But if you look at the top of my page, the revenue section, look at the state sources. In some areas, we're showing a large increase, like state money that's in the budget is up to $1,400,000. But state money that's in your grant fund is down $1,200,000. So when you combine the two items, state aid is only at $200,000 over that 10-year period of time, which is only 4.5%. Now, the low increase in state aid drives your taxes because you're not being helped out, basically. Now, the state indicates that they support education, about 65% who stay in New Jersey, but it's not each individual district. It's the overall educational process. And the biggest areas of state aid will be the special needs districts, the Newark's, East Orange, Orange, Camden. That's where the bulk of the money's going. So we in Highland Park, Huntington County, get very little in state aid. The bottom half of the exhibit shows you the areas of increases over the last 10-year period. Biggest areas, special education, support services, and employee benefits. You compared to our other districts are about the same. Maybe the dollar amounts a little bit more here, but those are the three areas of concern in practically every other district.
Three sons would experience learning environments in which they were expected to achieve, they were well supported and nurtured in doing so, where they had opportunities for self-directed learning and experiential learning, and where they had the space to develop a positive self-identity. Also, I believe firmly, and still do believe firmly, that all schools should provide holistic learning opportunities so children can grow intellectually, socially, emotionally, and physically. I believe this is what all children deserve, and I believe here in Highland Park, I see the initiatives here that are reflective of that philosophy and those goals. My youngest son is now in the eighth grade here at the middle school, and my junior and senior are way up boarding school. As my sons are now teenagers and young men, I've found more ways to contribute to the community with my time, and I've been contributing to youth and family-centered initiatives, both as a recent board member of the Who Is My Neighbor organization and as a member of the Highland Park Parents with Student of Color group. Education has also been foremost for me on a professional level. I've always been an educator. My career started as a preschool teacher in Head Start programs, and then as a developmental interventionist for young children ages birth to three. For the past 17 years, I have taught students who are blind and visually impaired. I travel to K-12 public schools and specialized private high schools through, or schools throughout New Jersey, and provide direct instruction and consultative support to staff, assisting them in implementing a quality educational program for students with visual impairment. It's work that I love to do and that I find very challenging, stimulating, and rewarding all at the same time. This past summer, in initial in an initial effort to start doing some community-oriented programming for kids with special needs, I was fortunate enough to receive grant funding from the borough to provide a theater arts program for kids with special needs here at, and it was a great experience for a week here in August. The camp, I am proud to say, will hopefully continue, and it'll just be the start of more opportunities like this in our town. In conclusion, I believe that my varied experience and background as an educator and an engaged community member and as a parent really gives me a rich experiential base, a skill set, and a foundation for effectively representing the community as a board member. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Great. Thank you so much, Monique. So I have three questions for you, same questions that we'll ask of all three candidates. If you could please tell us your view of Highland Park School District's greatest challenge and how you would like to see the district address it.
One greatest challenge? Okay.
You can pick a couple.
Yeah, I mean, just sitting here listening to the audit, I think, you know, budgetary issues must be high on the list of challenges for the school district, and it is encouraging to hear that as a board, you're able to use the resources that we have here as a community, what the community can afford, and provide an effective education. So, I mean, I think that's a huge challenge. I will also add to that, based on what I've noticed here as a parent and a resident, issues of inclusion and access and equity are really huge here. We have a diverse town, but I feel like we need to make sure what happens in our schools and what happens in our classrooms really reflect our effort in the nuts and bolts of what we do, reflect an effort to make sure that all children have equal access to opportunities that can enrich them. I do believe that sometimes that gets lost in policy setting and policy initiatives. Trigling down to the classroom is really important, so I do think that it's important to be focused on the instruction that's happening, that teachers and administrators are supported in initiatives so that they do, that they are able to carry it out at the classroom level. And as I said in my intro, that's very important to me personally.
Well, it's a perfect lead-in to our next question, which is that the main focus of the district strategic plan, which was created with the input from the community, administration, staff, students, and board members, is educational equity. What does educational equity mean to you?
Right, so I did kind of speak to that. I will say that I am also in the process of completing a education doctorate degree at Rutgers, and my research interest is in equity and access, particularly in the field of special education that I am in. And to me, equity and access really means that all children, again, are met where they at, where they are, their needs are met exactly where they are, and they are given the resources that they need to achieve and excel. I do believe that the initiatives that you are implementing here, from differentiated learning to inclusive environments where all children have accesses, access to the same kind of math and English classes in the elementary school level, really helps level the playing field, so that what we're doing here in the schools is not reproducing what we see in our society in terms of the social inequalities.
Okay. And the last question we have for you is that this is a tumultuous time in education policy. What role do you see for yourself as a board member or for the board as a whole when confronted with district, state, and/or federal education policies that you don't agree with?
Right, so I guess as a board, of course, we have to be compliant with the district and state policies and regulations, but I do also believe that as a board member, we need to be advocates and really use what we know is best practice based on research and evidence-based studies showing what works best for children, because we're here to serve the children first. And I think our role is to advocate not here, not only here at a local level, but also on a state and district level.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Monique.
Hello.
Floor is yours.
All right, just to open up on why I want to be on the board. All right, so I am currently 22 years old. I moved to Highland Park when I was two. I've been in this community for now over 20 years. I've been through every school district that Highland Park has to offer. I've seen it all. I've been through special education programs, regular programs. I've gone to be in the captain of the football team, captain of the track team, to be in a model, you end up graduating with a 3.6 GPA. Currently, I've been volunteering coaching, giving my time to middle and high school students, and I find that to be honestly one of the most rewarding things I've ever done in my life. So I guess the really reason why I want to be here on the board is because I feel I can make a positive difference. I feel that I can inspire people who are around my age, maybe a little older, maybe a little younger, but to try to come out and make a difference. I might not know everything about being on a board, but one thing that I do know about is the Highland Park community, and you will not find one person who has more passion or more desire about that, because this community has given so much to me in my life that I want to give back as much as I can, that maybe I can make a positive difference to somebody's life. And what I'm here for is for the students. I don't have any alternative agendas or anything like that. I'm just here out of the pure kindness or pure aspiration to want to better myself and better this community and this board, and that's why I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask you the same three questions that we asked to the other two candidates. Please tell us your view of HP School, of the Highland Park School District's greatest challenge and how you would like to see the district address it.
I currently feel that the Highland Park High School District's greatest challenge is, I feel like it's connecting with students and the community as a whole. I feel that in light of some recent events that I've seen or heard about, that there's been some sort of disconnect between, I don't feel like the students know what they're doing, I feel a lot of community members aren't aware of what they're doing. So I feel that one of the strongest challenges could be to possibly like unite, how do I say, students or younger people together and actually try to form a more community bond, so that the student feel that there's a problem, they can go to their administration, they can go to their teachers, they can go to one of us, they can go to anyone for help. So I feel like that's a great challenge that we face that we can possibly work towards.
Okay. And the main focus of the district strategic plan, which was created with input from the community, administration, staff, students, and board members, is educational equity. What does educational equity mean to you?
Sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. The main focus of the district strategic plan, which was created with input from the community, administration, staff, students, and board members, is educational equity. What does educational equity mean to you?
I believe that educational equity, to me, means like how much we're putting into the actual value of education. What are we trying to do to further better the education of the students? And I feel that that's something very important to look at when being on the board is how much are we doing for the students? Are we doing everything the right way? And are we doing the best that we can to further better the equity of education for the students?
Okay. And the last question for you tonight is, this is a tumultuous time in education policy. What role do you see for yourself as a board member or for the board as a whole when confronted with district, state, or federal education policies that you don't agree with?
Sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. This is a tumultuous time in education policy. What role do you see for yourself as a board member or for the board as a whole when confronted with district, state, and/or federal education policies that you don't agree with?
I feel that my role, being on the board, if there's something that I would disagree with, is possibly to try and facilitate, figure out why I don't agree with it, trying to understand other people's point of view, and try to come up with the most rational answer to that question, whether that be, you know, maybe I don't necessarily agree with something, but trying to find out why I don't agree with it. Maybe it's because it's something from the student's side of things, as a younger perspective, that I don't agree with it, or maybe it's for a personal reason. But trying to work with everyone and being a part of this board to solve any questions or dilemmas that might come up.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chris. Should we bring the rest of them in? Okay, so now that we have conducted all of the interviews, the board will recess to executive session to discuss the candidates and the interviews, and then we will come back out into public session as quickly as we possibly can and vote. So can I get a motion to recess to executive session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
So much for coming out. I think it takes a tremendous amount of courage to to get up here and not only speak to the board and be interviewed by the board, but to do it on camera. So I give you all the all the credit in the world for for coming out and doing that. A few of us on the board have been in your shoes. We know how hard it is, and, you know, and we also know what a commitment it is, you know, whether you're the person who's appointed or not, you're making that commitment to the to the town, to the board, and we hope whether or not you're appointed tonight, that you maintain that commitment and that you keep abreast of what we're doing. We can, it's, we look at the board and the work that we do as an all-hands-on-deck kind of kind of scenario. And, you know, in the last couple of years, the board has gotten less tumultuous, and we're really kind of like just getting down to like the nitty-gritty of getting work done. So you can see, we don't have a lot of people hanging out with us anymore. So we're always happy to have people come and come and hang out and give us feedback. So we really appreciate everyone's interest, and we appreciate your time tonight. So thank you very much for coming out. And with that, does anyone have a nomination for a for a position, for a board board seat?
Yes, I would like to nominate Ms. Monique Coleman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? No? Okay, seeing none, Linda, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre Trebono?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, I would like to congratulate Ms. Monique Coleman and invite her to come up and have the most strange moment of your life when you come sit on the other side of the table. Then again, thank you both so much for coming out and for for applying. We really appreciate it. Okay. Make sure your mic is on. Okay, so now I let Linda do her thing, and Linda will swear Monique in.
So you probably weren't here earlier when we swore in the new board members. Okay, I'm going to read parts of the oath and ask you to repeat after me.
Okay.
So just make sure you speak into the microphone. I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under authority of the people.
Under authority of the people.
And I do affirm.
And I do affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of a board of education.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of a board of education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Of offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Of offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
I take this oath of office.
I take this oath of office.
Notwithstanding that results of the criminal history background investigation.
Notwithstanding that results of the criminal history background investigation.
May not yet be available.
May not yet be available.
And acknowledge that I have a statutory obligation.
And acknowledge that I have a statutory obligation.
To submit my fingerprints for said criminal history background check.
To submit my fingerprints for said criminal history background check.
Welcome to the Board of Education.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good night, Dawn and Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I just, thank you. And Linda, did you want to have the the rest of the board side there?
Oh, so, yeah, so the next thing is the discussion and signing of the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest. So the Code of Ethics were just, and Conflict of Interest are two different documents. They've been distributed to each of the board members. Dr. Taylor, did you want to speak about any you have been?
I'm not going to dive too deep into the the Code of Ethics, because this board, I think, has gone over the individual items. I'll be conducting an orientation with Darcy and Linda for Monique, little does she know. Sometime, hopefully next week, we'll get together and before tonight's out, and see when we can get together. And we'll talk in more detail about the Code of Ethics with you personally, since you're new to this process. But just a couple of minders that I think are helpful now that we have a board president for 2018. The board president will be the spokesperson for the board, so if you had any concerns or things you'd like to address, either at the district level or beyond, that should go through Darcy, or may as well, of course, if I feel it's a board matter, I'll refer it to Darcy's attention. That includes questions that you may receive from the media, the press, online media as well. Social media is becoming a very prevalent venue, very common venue for people to chime in on board issues. It's it's very helpful for us to filter our responses to those issues through one or two people. So I think that's what I most want to impress upon everybody, if I had to pull something out of the Code of Ethics, is hopefully anything you'd like to say.
Each of the board members has been a board member in the past, and so each of you will have already received this Code of Ethics. We must distribute it each year, and it serves as a reminder, something you can just refer back to in case there's any points that maybe you just forgot about. So I would just encourage you to read through it once again, just to refresh your memories. And there is an acknowledgement of receipt of the documents that I'd like you to sign and return to me so that I have on record that you have received those documents.
Just what I wanted. Okay, all right, so we will move on with the rest of our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the annual board meeting calendar. Did everybody get a chance to, oh, and Monique, just so you know, for, that's the only thing that we're voting on for, I believe, for the rest of the agenda. The rest is just, let's see, no, I guess there are some other things that we're voting on. So for those things, you can just abstain for tonight, since you, you know, didn't have any of the agenda materials ahead of time, so it's just kind of customary for the new board member to just abstain on the agenda items for tonight. And then moving forward for for future agendas, obviously, you'll, we'll show you how you get you get access to those documents, so you can review them beforehand, so you can you can vote. Yeah, of course.
And Monique, you'll note, though, that most of the resolutions on tonight's agenda are annual re-ups, things we do on a regular basis. Most of most of these resolutions have to do with appointments of district staff to positions like affirmative action officer or title of mine officer.
Okay. So the board meeting calendar is on the agenda. Did anybody have any concerns with the and the calendar? We we ran it through our our checks to make sure we're not we're not stepping on the agenda.
Yep, I reached out to members of the community, religious community as well, to verify we're not conflicting with dates.
Wonderful, okay. So can I get a motion to approve the annual board meeting calendar? Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Wait, sorry. Huh? Oh, that was me. Sorry, my mic was off. Ann.
Judy second.
Judy second. Okay, thank you. So can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre Trebono?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Abstained.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay, and then the rest are, the next few are all of, a few different positions. So the delegate and alternate to the New Jersey School Boards Association, I've been doing that happily. Nobody else feels like they're really excited to go to the Mercer County. All right, so I am happy to to stay the delegate. Who was the alternate?
It was Rob Roselwitz.
Was it you? Was it Rob? Was it you? No, he's on the Middlesex County School Boards Association. Huh? I think it was me. I think it was you. I think it's you. I've never had to go, so. All right, well, next time, I'm bringing you with me. Okay, there you go. So we're going to make Michelle the the. Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the annual board meeting calendar? Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Wait, sorry.
Huh?
Oh, who first?
Oh, that was me. Sorry, my mic was off. Ann.
Judy, second.
Judy, second.
Okay, thank you. So can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietravono?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Abstained.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay. And then the rest are, the next few are all of, a few different positions. So the delegate and alternate to the New Jersey School Boards Association, I've been doing that happily. Nobody else feels like they're really excited to go to Mercer County. All right, so I am happy to stay the delegate. Who was the alternate?
Was it Rob?
Was it you? Was it Rob? Was it you? No, he's on the Middlesex County School Boards Association.
I think it was me.
Huh?
I think it was me.
I think it was you.
I've never had to go, so.
All right. Well, next time I'm bringing you with me. Okay. There you go. So we're going to make Michelle the alternate. Oh, so wait, the first one is to the New Jersey School Boards Association. We don't usually have that. We usually have the Middlesex County School Boards Association and the Delegate Assembly. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The second one is Middlesex County.
Number one was for the Delegate.
Okay, all right. Got it, got it, got it. Okay, and Michelle, and then Rob, are you okay staying for Middlesex County?
Absolutely.
Okay. And anybody have a, and I think actually I was the alternate for that.
Yes, you were.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll stick with that. And Scott, you're going to stay the representative for the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Let's see, following resolutions. So these are all of the kind of like annual resolutions that we have every year to say what our papers of record are. We don't have to like kind of read through them, do we?
I just did want to note that in item number E, letter E, is, the item in, the sentence in bold is a new addition
Okay.
which was requested by our auditors. Because of the fact that in the spring, we had a, an absence of a treasurer of school monies for a few months. And so during that time, we should have appointed or authorized Dr. Taylor to be an alternate for signature purposes.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, and the rest is just, you know, our standard appointments for, that we do every year. So can we just move 23 and 24?
Excuse me. On item 24, letter G, it should state supervisor of educational services, not director.
Okay.
And also I want to acknowledge that the headings are wrong on the agenda. We'll correct that for the minutes.
Okay. All right, so we'll move 23 and 24 all in one fell swoop. Okay, does anybody have, I'm sorry, can we get a motion to?
Wait, what about 20 and 21 and 22?
Did we miss those?
You commented, but you didn't move them.
I don't believe they're motioned.
Yeah, we don't have some.
Oh, they're not, even though it says I moved.
Oh, they, it does. Yes.
So why didn't you move them all?
All right, let's move them all. 20 to 24.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Did we have a motion?
I guess I moved them.
Darcy moved them.
Yeah.
And Rob, second. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Okay. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietravono?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Abstained.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay, and Linda, we don't have any communications on the agenda. You did give us a couple of things in print.
There were two, yeah, there were two letters that I distributed. They'll be listed on the next agenda, just for reference purposes.
Okay, great. And so that brings us to my president's report, which is appointing the appointments for the, for our committees. So the first one is our Committee on Curriculum and Instruction. And as I kind of mentioned briefly earlier in my remarks, you know, I feel, and I think the rest of the board would pretty much agree, that we've kind of hit our stride in a number of ways. Our committees have been together now for, you know, the better part of two years, really. And the committee chairs know their roles, the committee members understand their roles, and, you know, I don't see any, I don't think anybody sees any need to really shake things up tremendously when we have things working pretty well. So in terms of committee chairs, I'm inclined to keep everybody where they are, which would put Michelle as the chair of the curriculum committee, Mark as the chair of the finance committee, Judy as the chair of the personnel committee, Ann as the chair of the policy committee, Mark again as the chair of the negotiations committee, and the only one that would then change is the chair of equity and excellence, because that was Sharice's position, and I'm hoping that our new friend down at the other side of the table would like to step into that role.
Uh, sure.
Yay!
I would love that.
Okay. And don't worry, we will, you know, make sure you have all of the support you need to feel like you have your feet under you
Thank you, yes.
to do so.
I only have two meetings a week.
Yeah, I should have asked that first. That's like an hour, two hours. Those are the short ones.
Okay. And then to fill out those committees, Ruth, I believe you had expressed interest to move from curriculum to personnel. Okay, so Monique, if you wouldn't mind being on curriculum, I think that might be
Definitely, yes.
a really nice fit for you for this year. And just so you know, the appointments of committees will be for this entire year.
Okay.
And then curriculum was also Rob, Ross Levich. So you're okay staying there, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. So finance, we'll keep the same with myself, which seriously can't believe I'm going on three years on finance. I used to think that was like
And willingly.
If you ever put me on finance, I will hurt you, but now I actually kind of enjoy it. It's really strange. I kind of like feeling like I've mastered this to some degree. And now Mr. Colontano is giving us pretty pictures. So how can I not say, when he gives me pretty pictures in color?
Miracles happen.
That was pretty exciting for me today. I like a visual.
Colorful pie chart.
I like a colorful pie chart. And also, yes, colorful pie charts, more of those. And so Rob Magaziner as well. And that means that we will be the three busy bees for the next few months of budget meetings and presentations, and while the rest of you are like basically just on like Caribbean cruises for the next couple of months. And we all, and this is the fun part, Monique, is different committees each gets their time where they're like, "Ah!" And the other ones are like, so right now it's finance. We're the ones on the hot seat. And so personnel, that would put Ruth and Ann on personnel. And, let's see, policy.
It's all the chairs of the other committees.
Oh, the chairs of the other committees. Okay, right. And then you guys kind of like
We volunteer.
Somebody has to say, "I won't come out and play today."
It's hard, it's really hard.
We can't have more than five people in a room, Monique, without it being a violation of the Public Meetings Act, or unless we publicly advertise it and make space for public comments. So when our committees meet, it's maximum four people. So the policy committee has five committee chairs and me, which, you know, makes it a quorum. Someone has to volunteer to bow out, as you've probably heard already.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay, and then negotiations, I think we'll keep the same as well. So that was Michelle and Ann and Rob Ross Levich. And let's see, equity and excellence was Ruth and Rob Magaziner, right? And you're both happy to
Excuse me.
stay put there? I'm sorry.
Okay, there's not enough lines.
Oh, I know, yes.
Our lines got a little messed up. So who was that, Rob?
Uh, Rob Magaziner and Ruth.
Thank you.
And Drug and Alcohol Alliance?
Yep.
Josh's fine to stay there?
For my part.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Wait a minute.
Uh, no, I didn't get there yet, but that's okay. I know there has, we haven't had a lot going on for you there, Michelle, but you want to stay with public information committee and HPTV?
Sure.
Ed Foundation, Rob, you're good staying there? Okay, so that would be Rob Magaziner.
Yep.
Universal Access, Judy, you're okay to stay there?
Yes, please.
I mean, and the nice part about this is I think everybody's kind of established relationships with the people who are on their committees. Okay, so Public Library is going to be Rebecca Fittipaldi. Our new, what's her official title? Supervisor of
Curriculum and Instruction for Humanities
Thank you.
for updating our media outlets about our closing.
And I've been a liaison to shared services, even though there hasn't been a whole heck of a lot going on there. And Ruth, you okay to stay with CPAC? All right. And Monique, Sharice was the liaison to parents of students of color. Would you be willing to, I know you've
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, wonderful. And human relations, Ann?
Yes.
Yes.
Please?
Yes, please.
Board of Health, Mark?
Yep.
And green team, Rob?
Yes.
And cable TV advisory committee?
I believe we had Chris Przowski liaison, but that was last year. Probably should be a member of the board. If not, I could have.
Brian, something? Brian, no, yeah, Brian. Brian.
Okay.
Brian.
Appoint him, and I'll let him know.
Okay. Works for me. Okay, so that's it for the appointments. And that brings us to public comment. We have no public comment. Or we have no public, rather. We have public comment, we just don't have public. And does anybody have anything for old business? New? Okay, anybody have anything for new business?
I guess this is old business, because I had asked
I just said new business.
I know, I know, I've got to sneak it in there under the wire. The issue with attendance that I was asking for an update on, whether that was remediated at Bartle, there was some
Did you get my email? I said to follow up to your question about that, and I can pull it up if you'd like and read it.
Yeah, no, I got the email. I just, I didn't know if we wanted to discuss it or if anyone else knew if anyone was interested.
Sure, I would like to know how that's remedied.
I recall getting that email, but I don't recall the specifics of what it says. I'm just going to look right now.
Yeah, okay.
I'm interested, just not
Yeah, no, I was just curious if anyone wanted to talk about it in public, but that's fine.
This seemed to have resolved the issue.
It was a learning experience.
Yeah.
We had plans in place now, had a clear timetable in all schools, so it's consistent in the way we do it. We have a paper trail as well as using computers now.
So for the community members that contacted us about this issue, they've been contacted or we should just assume that they're watching this?
Well, I believe that, I did report to the public at a board meeting soon after that situation.
Yes.
So I'm hoping that
That was enough.
served everybody their, you know, response. But if you believe I should respond to them personally, because you've heard from them, I'd go do that.
I haven't heard from them. I just was wondering if that was like protocol, if we got in touch with them individually since they got in touch with us, you know, specific to their family's issue.
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Benjamin did personally email the parent. I think there were two parents in particular who expressed concerns, personally emailed them right away to tell them that we had things in place, and that short-term fix was to have a paper marking now of attendance
Okay.
as well as the computer use.
Could I just follow up on that? Is there going to be still a backup?
Yeah, there will always be a parallel process.
Ah, great.
Paper and Genesis.
Right.
Because ultimately, everything does have to go into the database, and so that's where we keep track of
But in the unlikely event of some kind of technology disaster, we still have the paper. Good.
Look, it was a snafu that could happen, which is why
Of course, of course.
you know what, we should always have this backup in place.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Can't hurt.
Okay, so then any new business? No? Okay, so seeing done, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.